All right, so pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus. This meeting of the Town of Berlin Select Board will be conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of meetings or of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort we made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The Town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage. The town's YouTube channel, Approve Minutes, will be posted to mytowngovernment.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways, with both audio and video access or by telephone audio only. Should any board member have technical difficulties and/or lose access to the meeting, the meeting will recess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date agreed to by a majority of the board or adjourned until our next scheduled meeting. And we'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. We have approval of the November 9th open session minutes. Do I hear a motion or?
I'm good. I just read Mary's small change to it, so motion to accept minutes from last week.
Thank you. And we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
That's unanimous. Margaret, do we have any correspondence?
There is no correspondence tonight.
All right, then I will ask if there's any general public comment.
Hi.
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 Um, I guess we're just wondering about the center of town and the traffic pattern and what's going on with that. How long is it going to be there? What will be the deciding factors? What are the reasons for it? I guess there was a Zoom meeting that I attend and I just feel like a change like that when we're in a pandemic, when we can't really, you know, have real meetings is kind of a drastic to me who's lived in the center of town my whole life. So I just want to know more before it actually, you know, is a done deal and what's involved there. That's all.
Okay, Margaret, would you want to answer that for us?
I sure will. First and foremost, it's a pilot project. It's a 30-day project that will be coming down on December 7th, by or before December 7th. The whole idea behind the project, Shared Streets and Spaces, was to address concerns that were related to COVID with businesses closing and to try to improve pedestrian and bicycle access around the village center. So to be able to access businesses a little easier, cultural facilities, the church, houses of worship and things like that. It is somewhat tied to Mast Dot's Complete Streets program, but it is solely intended to be a pilot project. It's one month and it'll come down on December 7th. So I hope that answers your questions.
Well, when, I feel like I'm not, we're trying to get this everybody here. When, um, when will the deciding factor be and how will that go into effect? I mean, is this going to be a town decision? Is this just going to be a vote from the selectmen or how is that all going to come about?
All right, so to, oops, through the chair.
Go ahead.
So just to try to clarify, the intent from the very beginning was that this be a pilot project. So it's a temporary project right from the beginning. It doesn't automatically become permanent. In fact, it's not going to become permanent. It's going to be taken down in December. What it would do is it would help gauge the feasibility of doing any permanent improvements in the center of town related to shared streets and spaces or complete streets. There would be no decision made without the input of the town. This was strictly a pilot project funded by Mast Dot to gauge the feasibility of permanent improvements later, if any.
Okay, because I have asked some people and I'm getting mixed messages and that, yeah, oh, I just can't. I'm from officials in town that don't even know the correct answer of what you just gave to me, so I thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I think one of the times that we will be talking about this is at our coffee talk. If you could pass that along Janet to people who might be interested, they could tune in.
There were supposed to be other people on tonight. Of course, I'm a guest, so I can't see, but you might see if there's other participants. I don't know. There seems like there's some, but not many in the participants, so anyways, okay, I'll pass it along. Coffee Talk is December?
9th.
10th? 10th. I haven't got my calendar.
And I encourage everyone who, everyone who has concerns or supports the project to go back and look at the October 20th Community Information Session that was held. It's on YouTube, so you can watch it and really get a better sense of the project.
October 20th?
It was October 20th.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Somebody's got a little cone head on their dog.
Maverick.
The cone of shame.
It is the cone of shame.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. So we'll move on to our appointment. Go ahead.
I do have, the board last week asked if you could have introductions to the new highway employees. I see that our highway superintendent is here and at least one of our new highway employees is attending. So would you like to entertain them for their introductions now and?
Sure.
Okay. Sorry, I should have, I should have brought that. I'm glad we're still in public comment because I told, that's where I told Dave we might be able to fit them in.
I'm here.
I know.
There we are.
Yes.
Dave.
We're a little technically challenged if you haven't figured that out yet. So who's with us? We have
John Mitchell is here.
So John came to us about three weeks ago now from, he worked previously in Princeton. He's a, he's a good employee. He's great. He's picking up things quickly. We had him out today in a loader running the brush mower, which is new to him. And he's pretty excited about the job, so we want to welcome John. And I'm not sure if he wants to say a few words, but we have to keep him to a few words because he's got the gift of goodie.
John, are you there? And what is your nickname, John?
I don't know about the nickname. I'm sure some of them aren't as good as they should be, but no, my name's John Mitchell and I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to work for the Town of Berlin. I've extremely enjoyed the employment so far. As you can tell, I'm a little challenged tonight myself. We lost electricity about two hours ago and it hasn't come back on yet, so I'm sitting in the dark with the little lights on me so you can at least see me. So I wanted to be able to put a face to the name that you guys, I apologize. Now, I'm making the first meeting. I kind of spaced out and I don't know, I just, I was helping my wife with some homework and just completely missed the first meeting, so I apologize, but thank you for
Yeah, well, it's nice to meet you.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
John is a welcome addition to the town's team.
Yes.
Steve is too. Unfortunately, he couldn't come. He couldn't visit tonight, huh, Dave?
Uh, he was, he was going to do his best to make it, but I guess he couldn't coordinate it.
Okay.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe the next time you're coming, Dave, you could encourage him to come along.
Yeah, I'll see, I'll see if he can't come along even next week if he doesn't make it later, later tonight.
That's fine. Good.
All right.
Well, and you know
Thank you very much.
Dave, you know we're going to put you on the squad for Coffee Talk in a few weeks, so you know, it's a good opportunity to bring you guys then, just saying.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay. Welcome, John. Take care, Dave.
Mary, did you have a question or are you good? No? Okay. Okay, then we'll entertain our department update from Chief Clark.
Good evening. How's everybody tonight?
Hey, Chief.
Good. Nice to see everybody. I'd like to start off by saying we had another fairly busy month for the Town of Berlin. In October, there was 88 incident responses. 24 were fire-related. 21 were EMS responses with the ambulances, nine motor vehicle accidents that the ambulances responded to. There was 27 public service, a couple of hazmats, which was, one was a gas leak and one was a, I'd say a natural gas leak and one was like an oil spill. And then five miscellaneous ones that show up, excuse me, show up on the incident reports. To date this year, you can see on the totals there, 18, 19 and 20. As of 12 November, we're at 745 incident responses and there's probably another eight to 10 from that since that was updated. So it's like, there's a lot of activity going on. Just shy of three calls per month, per day last month. And the personnel are really doing well. Per diem shifts is really showing accolades for the community of getting that ambulance out quick at night. And in the times of contact with a patient are way down. I know Scott asked some information for that on the 18th of November. They're doing an upgrade up to Neshova Valley where that IMC comes out of. So we should be able to run some data for you to look at that shortly after that. But we're trying, three ways to Sundays from here, not able to do it. So it's like, I hopefully can get that to you soon and I didn't forget about you. I wanted to keep you in the loop.
Oh, good. I got, I got your email too about the 18th or earliest, that's fine. It wasn't critical data, it's just things to look at because response times, you know, as you know, save lives and and when people ask what our extra money is getting, I think it's response times is we have better than we had five and 10 years ago.
Oh, for sure. Yep. And it's like, and it's actually really good data to have even on our end. I'm not a huge data guy, but it's like, I can look at that and it makes a lot of sense to me to look when, when you see those appropriate numbers. Today we had, oh, the other, one other thing that's attached is the Fire Prevention Activity Report for the month of October by the Fire Marshal. That's there for any questions that you have on that. There's some information there I don't get involved with on a day-to-day basis, but if you need an answer on something specific, but I'm at like, like really close to him. If he's busy on days, I'll go out and do some inspection for him along with the day staff. And we're getting into that now. It's almost hunting season, so we'll be doing more inspections as we move forward. The, uh, one really good meeting we had just this morning is the EMS Collections Working Group met just after lunch today, excuse me, at 1:00. And, uh, we went over some of the things and what I'd like to do through the chair, please, if I may, is ask the, your group there, boards are write-off, seven different accounts from 2014. Six passed a statute timetable and one is due to a bankruptcy where that bill was sent. It's a total of $5,485.62. And every month until we get caught up, I'm going to try to bring these numbers forward to your group and write off what we can a little bit at a time there and get those till we get caught up. So again, you can see the number, we're back in the 14s, but it's like, it is what it is. We're dealing with, and that whole EMS Collections Working Group is working really hard to get these all accounts taken care of.
So Chief Endor June, do you have any idea-ish how many we're looking at between 2014 to when we can possibly collect them, like almost now?
I, if June's on there, she might have a better number on that. I don't know. I don't have that information with here, right here with me from the collections agency to be able to drive, answer that question for you.
Yeah, I don't have that information with me in front of me to give you an exact number. I could only look into it.
When do we recognize the revenue? Do we recognize it upon receipt of cash or upon sending out the bill?
When we actually get it paid, so when we actually receive the cash.
So writing this off won't affect anything on the books because we've not recognized this revenue to then have a write-off?
That is correct.
And that gives my second one, because every year when we talk about how much money is in the account, that's money that's actually in the account because you only recognize it when the cash actually comes in. Okay, thanks.
And no rush, June. I was just curious because obviously 2014 to now is quite a chunk.
There are, through the chair, there are pages of accounts. I mean, and we're trying to collect all of them, but inevitably, some of them, the collections avenues are going to be exhausted. So that's why we're trying to clean up as we go so we can actually have a clear path forward.
Yeah.
And even when these are all written off, the collection rate is never 100%.
Never.
And so do we have a sense like from other fire departments, sort of what's a ballpark we should be aiming for? You know, is that 80%? Is it 50%?
I think it's going to be, it's going to probably, and I'm only speculating here, I think it's going to hover probably closer to 50% than 80% because of the, because of the contractual obligations through Medicare and Medicaid and insurance co-pays and things like that. So it's probably going to be hover around 50%.
Yeah, there's a lot of dynamic factors that go into that for different communities. Every community is a little different and you gotta just like see where, this will give us a really good idea where we sit in the Town of Berlin when we're done with this, with this year and see where we're going to end up at what percentage.
Yeah, and so in your report, Chief, when you talk about billing and credits, billing our bills you sent out this month and credits are receipts, the money we received this month.
That is correct. Yeah, and you'll see on that a little bit farther down. It's both October and there's also FY '21 to date there. And it's like, the response billing actually just is indicative of the operational responses that you do for the month. They're done, the reports are done, they're sent into coastal medical, a bill goes out. So it's like, and then sometimes the money, the credit money is from two or three, a call, some of it may be from a call two or three or more months ago that someone finally pays and it's kind of cyclical.
Well, if we're trying to, if we have a collection, is there trying to collect some of these older ones too? They could also be from two or three years ago.
Yep, so it's like, it's very dynamic and it's like, we're seeing that with our, with our working group meeting and but we gotta kind of like, June and Margaret have said at those meetings and the deputy, we gotta just hack away and get that down, then get to where we're caught up and then move forward.
And then, I'm sorry, I'm using the town report as my stand for my, my second monitor. Do we have, the budget has an amount we were expecting to receive in fiscal year '21 for receivables. How is that $48,155 doing compared to that? Because we're, what, July, August, November, October, November, where, you know, by the end of December, we're halfway through the year. Is that halfway to the, what we said we would try to collect?
It's about half. I think the number was $100,000. June, is that correct? Excuse me. I'm pretty sure the number was $100,000. I don't have my budget.
I'm sure as soon as this being said, I'm lifting up the monitor. I'm going to look at the book and I'll look it up myself, so.
When we actually, the amount of money that we appropriate at town meeting is money that we've already collected.
There you go.
So we're all set there. We don't have to worry about that.
You're right, June. We take, because we can only spend money we already have, not money we're expecting.
Yep.
Should have remembered that.
Thank you, June.
Problem.
Okay, is there any other questions for the chief about this?
No, just thanks for your due diligence. I know that this has been a thorn in everybody's side for a few years to try and get that. So thank you, Chief and June and everyone else who's on that committee and Sharon McGowan to try and get the money in that is owed to the Town of Berlin. So appreciate your diligence.
Yeah, we're pulling together. It's like, and catch up, you just gotta catch up on the old and then move forward.
Yep.
And the one last piece I got there, unless you have some questions, is on some of the personnel. We've had some really, really great personnel achievements here for new personnel who have gone and done a lot of training so that they can, able to respond. One is Jasmine Morello. She was an EMT that came in, works on a private ambulance and comes here on her days off. And she went and spent 260 hours of her own time to do firefighter one-two training and to get rid of the orange helmet and get the yellow helmet like we did it. We used to do those at your meetings and now it's hard to do that with the Zoom, but maybe we'll try it some night. And we have another new firefighter that's also an EMT that's attending the firefighter one training at the Mass Fire Academy. And then we have two that are coming in. They're in the orientation in physical examination screening portion of the entrance. And one's a firefighter one-two paramedic and the other one's a firefighter one-two already certified. So we're getting some trained people coming in. They want to come in and it's, I have some, I have some ideas why, but it's like, uh, I think with culture change a little bit, it's attracting really, really positive people that want to come in and belong. And it's like, and one of them is, one of the new ones coming in is the son of someone that's been here for many, many years, but he's been in another town and he's heard stuff and he says, oh, I want to come back to Berlin now. So it's like, so that makes me smile, makes me proud of him. He's a great, great kid. He's young and he'll do a really good job for the community. But that's like, unless you got any questions, that's kind of like really all I got. No big things. Everything's going smoothly. Everyone's working hard and it's like, I look forward to seeing everyone. We can say hi on the street again instead of just like through a screen.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion on the write-offs?
Yes.
So I'd like to move that we approve the write-off of the seven receivables from what, May 2014 to August 2014 to like $5,485.62 as recommended by, I don't know, recommended by either the chief or the TA committee or Margaret, but as recommended to us as the select board.
The chief will be continuing to bring forward recommendations.
Yep, yep. Thank you, Scott.
Seconded.
Second.
You did.
Okay. We'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
And I just have one more question, Chief. Have you had a lot of calls to the apartments as yet?
We've been in every building and the last one just got its inspection done. I think Friday, I went down there Friday and it was the last inspection so they can move it. And they had some sprinkler heads and some other things that, like little bit like cross the Ts and dot the Is stuff. I went in and did that Friday and they were moving in. So I think you get people in each compartment, each apartment place there. The numbers still aren't where you'll see them when it's full because it's, I'm not sure what capacity. I think they're at like that maybe 20 to 30% right in there between all seven buildings. So it's like, it's not really a true test of what you'll see when it's up and running in full, but it's like, yeah, they've had a bunch of calls down there. There's been a couple of days when there's been two or three and one day down there.
Are they, are they emergency calls or just the inspections and that kind of thing?
Oh, no, that's just, yeah, I don't even count the inspections. That's like a whole different thing. I don't count those, ever as responses there. I just count that if the ambulance goes or the engine goes or there's some type of investigation down there. Yeah, I don't count the inspectional activity there as a number on, on my activity stuff. Yeah, that's a separate report and those numbers are completely separate. Some departments do that, but I don't feel that we have to hear. It's what you see is what you get.
Right. I just was wondering how many emergency type calls, if it was a lot or if it was sort of general like the rest of the community.
No, I think there's a little bit more just simply because of the way it is. There's a lot of alarms in there, so we get a bunch of alarm calls that have been on there. Maybe we've probably been in there 25 to 30 times since they opened up the first one. Not a ton, but spread out, you know? Like one of those things, the call, the phone rings, the bell rings, you go and do it. And it's like, nice to get in there, they're well done. I have to say that the inspectional team of the Fire Marshal, they build the inspector and his assistant Tommy, who does those inspections, they really, really did a good job down there. I look at it because that was my job one time to do that and I see what they do and I listen to what they do. And you can really be proud of the job that they've done down there from top to bottom. It's like, they got it together down there and it's a, and it's done the right way so that there's the least impact on the town, like for emergency services.
Great, great. Glad to hear it.
I have one last question. Of course I have a question. Chief, how's Ava?
Oh.
So cute.
Say hello to her from us.
She's awesome. Yep. I got a nice picture. Grandfather's so proud of standing in the windowsill Friday morning. My son texts me, says, Dad, no rules Friday. Up on the windowsill hanging on, so it's okay. It is, yeah.
Nice.
Can I, can I add one thing to, Chief, I'm just going to supplement your report with one little thing. UMass Memorial Health Alliance has opened up two drive-through COVID testing sites, one in Lemonster and one in Auburn. They're going to be opening one up in Berlin at the Sears Auto Center. So that's going to be coming in the next couple of weeks. We will have a drive-through COVID testing site right nearby.
That should be open the second week of December. We did a walkthrough with the alliance people Thursday, I think it was. And they had to, it's still a tie-up on, you know what I mean? They're cleaning it out as we speak. But they got it on the, on the front burner for sure, rushing it and have it cleaned. They'll be able to do, they think, six cars at a time, drive them through, park them, shut them off, do the testing, complete the testing, move them. So it's like, it's a perfect setup for it. And it's like, and they got the green light on the conceptual plans for it from all the inspectors and myself and I think the chief Galvin was very happy with it. And you'll see that move and that will, you'll see that in the news because that will like be a really good testing spot. Location's great. And it's just a good setup to do it and be efficient and move people.
I saw the lines and on the news for Framingham today. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
And so this will be Berlin's first drive-through.
Really? You, oh, you're
We actually have bylaws that say we can't have drive-throughs.
That's right.
Somehow exempt from that?
It's actually a garage.
I'd like the answer to be yes, so.
Yeah, I think it's actually a garage and it's the same traffic pattern as when you got your tires changed.
Yep.
Just drive in and
Temporary garage.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you. Thank you for coming this evening.
It's very nice to see everybody. Thank you.
Nice to see you too.
Thank you, Chief. Have a good night.
Yep.
All right, well, I guess we'll move on to the town administrator report.
Okay, well, since we were talking about COVID, we'll stay on COVID for a minute. In the prior 14 days, six cases have been reported in Berlin and for an increase in cases of 2.14%. While we're still in the category of low-risk community, the gray communities, when we hit two and a half percent, if we were to hit two and a half percent, we'd start, we'd start showing up in yellow and we don't want to go there. The orders that we talked about last week remain in place. And also, I was forwarded the superintendent's report to the school district's families this past weekend and Superintendent Zangie, Jeff Zangie, actually reported to families in that report that he has tested positive for COVID and is now in quarantine. So Berlin Memorial School is scheduled to reopen from its fully remote learning mode on tomorrow and hopefully that will go okay. So there's that. Obviously caution is needed. Benefits consulting updates. Dennis and I met last week with Jill Gallant Shaw of Cooking Company and Tara Fafford of Maya, our health insurance provider. And what they have And what they have found so far in their research or what Jill has found is that there is plenty of room for savings with the town's plan. So they noted, Jill noted that Berlin really hasn't had any significant planned design changes for the past decade. And the town's current plan is pretty obsolete to most. So Jill will be coming to the board's meeting next week. To talk about measures the board can take and that's specifically that's chapter sections. 21 through 23 of chapter 32B could be accepted. And that would allow the town to adopt plan design changes that match GIC's benchmarks without having to join GIC. So she's going to explain a little more about that. And she understands that the goal is to try to maximize possible savings effective July 1, 2021. She also noted, it's also been noted, however, that the town's and its employees' health insurance costs are expected to increase eight to 10% in the coming fiscal year. So we don't know where this will go, but Jill will fill you in in more detail next, next Monday night. Do you have any questions on that? I sent my notes to you. Okay. Next is that our free cash has been certified and as you know, it was certified. At a much, at a much higher level than usual. This was due in large part to the really large free cash base. We rolled over to the current year. By deferring some capital expenses and some other spending and of course. Because we had implemented a spending freeze in the entire last quarter of FY '20. So all of those combined, some, some one-time revenues as well. All of those combined contributed to the 1.7 plus million dollars in certified free cash. We have received, finance committee is going to be discussing the certified free cash and look at it against the town's guidelines on Wednesday night. The next item is, is back to COVID, but an administrative capacity. So back on March 10th, when the governor declared. The public health emergency. One of the things that was included in that particular, in those particular acts. Was that land use, land use bodies or land use boards. Could suspend public hearings until 45 days after the declared emergency is lifted. However, this past week, when the legislature took up the supplemental budget. They reinstituted, not only did they reinstitute or not reinstitute, they pulled back on that suspension. And they have, they have ordered that the tolling period be stopped on December 1st. So this sends land use boards across the state scrambling to figure out how they're going to resume public hearings. So we are now working on trying to, well, our land use boards will be discussing how they actually resume. Hearings in this, in this climate, in the COVID, during a COVID declared emergency. So that was an interesting development. You'll hear more on that next. I'm sure I'll have more to report on that next week. The next thing, thing is shared streets and spaces. I won't take too much time on this because we spent a little time earlier in the meeting. But pedestrian beacons and signboards are on Central Street, barricades and street signs around Carter and Woodward. Temporarily redirecting traffic to one way around the triangle. Again, this is a one-month pilot project. The project materials are going to be removed by or before Monday, December 7th. And on my TA report, I put the link to the October 20th community information session. And yeah, that's all I have on that one.
Margaret, if people actually have commentary, where should they be emailing or sending those comments?
You know, it would be great if they could send them to the town. I know there have been many posts on, on the other. Social media sites, Berlin Neighbors Connect. It would be wonderful if they could share their comments and observations with us. We are going to be soliciting post-project comments, but if they have comments in the meantime, we'd be happy to receive them. So please send, you can send them to my email. Townadmin@townofberlin.com. You could send them to selectmen@townofberlin.com and we will compile, we will compile the comments. I'm going to be, we're going to be putting a sign up in the general store for people visiting the general store. That reiterates that this is a one-month pilot project. The next item. The next item I have is River Bridge, the development agreement. So I am recommending, I've recommended that the meeting between the CENIs and the select board and finance committee on Wednesday night be canceled. Because of the indefinite postponement of special town meeting. So I'm notifying the CENIs of that. I've gotten confirmation from VINCOM that that's. From the chair, that that's fine to postpone. So I'd like the board's thoughts on that. If you're, if you're amenable to postponing, then I'll just notify the CENIs.
I think it's fine.
Okay. That said, a small work group, we need to put together a small work group of local officials. Chris, I know you've been involved in the development agreement reviews in the past. I would like one representative from the select board, the finance committee, the planning board. And then public safety chiefs and the highway superintendent to sit on a work group to review the development agreement and modifications. And to discuss potential, the possibility for amendments with the CENIs.
I, I would like to volunteer to do that as long as it's all right with Peg and Scott.
Sure.
Works for me.
Okay. All right. So we'll, and I know VINCOM will be designating someone and as we're planning. So.
And please, Peg and Scott, if you have any specific concerns, please email Margaret. And let her know so that we're aware of these things.
Okay. Okay. I think we've got some sort of, some sort of notations from the, from the prior reviews. So we can start by, by bundling those. The last thing I have is just an announcement. The Lions, the Lions Club, Council on Aging, Berlin Seniors. Are doing a holiday lights contest. Where residents, business owners and others can sign up to light up their buildings. And have their, their displays judged by passersby. I think they're calling it the. I don't know, twinkle tour. So people can drive around over a certain period. And look at, look at the lights on people's houses. The deadline to sign up. To participate or to enter your home or business or neighborhood in the challenge or the contest is November 25th. Signups can be done at 19 Carter, Berlin General Store or Holiday Farm. And I believe there's, folks can also email recreation@townofberlin.com if they prefer to enter by email. More info on this is on Berlin Neighbors Connect and Berlin Residents United Facebook sites.
Sounds like, sounds like fun.
Sound nice and bright.
Yeah.
What we all need.
I know. All right. Any questions for Margaret? All righty. Then we'll move on to old business and ratification of the regional school committee election, the special legislation. Was there any questions for Margaret about the legislation?
I'm assuming. Legislation is what the select board voted a couple of meetings ago to support.
Right.
And send off to the district, which we did. And I think this reflects all of your concerns.
And it looks like they did Boylston and the school committee both vote these already or you don't know?
The school committee did. The school committee had, Boylston Select Board is ratifying tonight and that's what I've asked this board to do. And once we have that in place, we're good to go.
Okay. So if there's no questions, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. We'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
That's unanimous. All right. We're moving on to new business and review of the letter to River Bridge North LLC regarding the public safety mitigation payment, one of five. It was due November 1st.
So I am asking, we discussed this at last week's meeting. I am asking the board to support sending a letter. To River Bridge North LLC to offer a December 31st deadline to negotiate a payment plan for their first payment.
I think it, no, I, I mean, I think it's fair. I understand there's, you know, hardships all around, but you know, an agreement is an agreement. So. You know, let's, let's toss the softball out and see if we can throw them a branch and just find out what their response is.
Yeah, I, I agree. We should send out the letter and I'm interested to see what they have back. They'd like a bunch of things from the town. I'd like to think they also. You know, would do things for the town, so.
All right. Then do I hear, do, do we need a vote on this?
Yes, please. A vote to support sending the letter, yeah.
All right. So do I hear a motion to support sending the letter?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Thank you.
That's unanimous. All right. And we're down to board questions and comments. I have, actually, can I ask my questions first, Peg?
What makes you think that I have questions? Come on now.
Well, we had talked about. You know. Some kind of more of a recognition for the town clerk's office. And I did have a phone call from someone, a resident in town who thought that we, we needed to do something more. So I was wondering if the board would like perhaps a proclamation for the town clerk and her assistant and all of the. Assistants that they had, especially at the November 3rd election. You know, maybe perhaps Mary, if she has the time, could. Put together one of her proclamations.
I think that would be great. They did a great job. We had incredible turnout. I'm so proud of the town and the number of people that managed to vote in, in. Not the most ideal circumstances.
Right.
Oh, it was, this was one for the books.
I know.
They have earned a proclamation.
Yeah. And, and the other question I had about proclamations was that I know we put one together for Fran Gill. Do we know whether she has gotten a copy of it?
I can't answer that.
I know she's seen it.
I don't have her email address. I mean, I'm sorry, I don't have her street address.
Okay.
We've emailed each other though recently.
Okay, maybe perhaps we could ask, we had something we wanted to send her and we could make a copy of it that we could send to her.
Yeah, or I can always ask Mary McKelk for, for the address. I'm sure that she knows, so.
Sign a copy because it was electronically signed or do you want me to send the e-signed copy?
Well, what do you think, Peg and Scott?
I'd like the signed copy. I mean, it takes us all of three seconds for all of us to like run into the building at various times and sign it. I just think the hand, the hand chicken scratch means more than, you know, a signature that looks the same for all three.
But, but my hand chicken scratch is much less legible.
As well as mine. I have to think because I have to do Margaret. I'm like, M A R. So yeah, no.
Well, maybe we could have, we can.
The lines on the table for everybody.
Okay. You just let us know?
You'll be ready tomorrow.
Okay. All right. We, we could always put your name underneath your chicken scratch, Scott. And then I had a question for Peg or Mary on the two documents. The, that you're working on, Peg.
Yep.
Yeah. I was wondering whether, is it okay, Margaret, for us to send the red line? I guess if you're just accumulating the red line, then it's not deliberation.
That's totally fine. I will just gather.
Yeah, I mean, or send them to me if you want, you know, and I can take all three and I can smush them together. And then at some point, you know, in the not so distant future, I don't know if we'll have it ready for the 30th or maybe the week after, depends upon. How quick you guys can turn it around. I mean, in the comments, the general questions I went through, updated a lot of. Addresses and emails and put questions in, you know, like if the link was going out to, you know, Hadley, what should be there or.
Right.
Things like that. So they weren't like detailed, but yeah, if you just want to send them back, I'll take.
I really thought it looked pretty good.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah, I, I still have like, so that it seems to be just a list of select board openings and not, the town doesn't seem to have a list of openings. And I think that makes things more difficult when the, the list just keeps going to openings, the select board appoints and not all the openings we have.
Well, I did, I did say to Peg, you know, let me know when you'd like to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
To, to, you know, once you've.
Right. Cause I, I don't think that's something Peg could fix. I think it's something we might have to discuss and figure out how, like, who, who, who keeps them because we, since we as select board don't appoint all of them. We also might not be aware of all of them. The document does say to talk about the town clerk. But if we're doing recruiting, I, I, I worry it feels like a slight if we put a lot of effort into just filling the select board. Openings and not what the town has for openings in boards and committees around town.
Yeah.
So that might be a good intro actually to the handbook itself. Just kind of, just lay out who the appointing authorities are and. What members they appoint, you know, for what terms and things like that. That way it's always kind of at the forefront.
Yeah, no, send me.
I can try to, I can try to help put that together.
Yeah, I, I thought I saw a word document at one point that really, it, it was visually cluttered, but I think it, I couldn't think of a better way of doing it that did list. Sort of all the appointing authorities and what they appoint and how long those do, because.
I think, but I thought I saw something like that. Yeah, I think the, the board's appointment list actually shows other appointing authorities in that. So we could, we could put all that together and bundle it up and. No?
Yep.
Yep, yes.
Yeah.
Know what I, I only know what the selectmen know because I'm not privy to information from the town clerk's office. I've asked that we have a shared database. So that we can constantly cross-check one another, but there's been no interest.
No, that's. Yeah, maybe the front of the town report too would help.
Okay.
We'll build something.
All right. Well, that was my questions.
You can go first. I have a list as well, but I can edit it at some point.
No, no, mine's going to be quick. I mean, yeah, mine too were the volunteer draft guide and the, the board guide. So yeah, as soon as you can get them back to me. I'll smoosh them together and then we can go from that copy from there. I mean, I honestly see this as a working and living and breathing document. It's not going to be a one and done. There's going to be. Version upon version of it. And I did want to share that I actually saw some of the train trash has been picked up.
Wow.
I know. I was excited.
By Vamber did like, like scavengers come along and take it away for them.
Well, Scott, I don't know. I didn't see anybody picking it up, but you know, when I went by the one by Jones Road, there was a ton of metal. That was just lying around and now it just seems to be the actual tracks and the big long. Iron. So I'm hoping that this is not the end of it, but it looks better. So I will continue my week and nag, nagagram. Back to the woman who contacted me and hopefully we can get this stuff picked up, so.
And that letter did go out, correct? The letter to the S X did go out, did it not? Okay, good. That's all I got, Scott. It's all you know.
Good. I, I don't know. We'll mark this. I have more questions than Peg had. Margaret, I responded, the curatorial storage building. I was great to hear that their heating system is going to go in on the 10th of December, give or take a few days.
Let's hope it's December 10th. That's what we're shooting for.
Yes. And that I, I don't know if there's any more we could do to sort of follow up the idea being, you know, since if it's done on the 10th. How, how quickly or that it's probably. To speed along the moving of things out of places where they're stored into that building. Like the shelves could be moved in there before December 10th. And so taking the things that are off the shelves that are out of the bookcases where they're stored. Getting the shelves and bookcases moved over there and set up with, meant that by the time the building is at a stable temperature and able to store things, that it's just the moving of things. And so if we ended up with a nice weekend on, in, in. And so if we ended up with a nice weekend on, in, in December, where moving is an okay thing to do, we could actually get some stuff done and moved out. I don't know if there's anything more we can be doing to help facilitate that happening. I saw you, you did say if they want town resources to ask.
Yeah, I emailed the Historical Commission today and said, look, just, just let me know. If, if you want, you know, if you need help, let us know. I can coordinate departments to help out.
It's budget season. So this next point, this, I've now moved on to the next thing now. It's budget season. One of the things I'd like to have done is expand the amount of resources we provide to Berlin families in need.
Yeah.
We currently provide some money to Wheat Services, a dollar amount that has not gone up in 15 years. I mean, the number we give today is the same number we gave when I started on FinCom 10 years ago, and I think it was been that number for a while. And thinking that it might be, if I could wave magic wands and not have to care about what other policies, you know, change that line in the budget that just says wheat and make it, you know, for family, Berlin families in need, increase that number by some amount and give some to wheat and have some others go to an application for a maybe food assistance program in Berlin, that there might be an organization in town that we could provide some financial support for, to help families and maybe even other ways to help Berlin families in need. You know, I know that some increased money I'm asking for, but with a $12 million budget, to be able to spend $10,000 to $12,000 on Berlin families in need seems like a paltry amount that might help our neighbors out. And I don't know how we go about that, but I think now's the time to talk about the process, so that by the time we get to the end of the budget season, we actually have a chance at a result in this.
Well, through the chair, a short answer on the budget side. We just need to have agreements executed with the agencies, the nonprofits, well, the charitable C, 501(c)(3), we need to have agreements in place with them to be able to provide financial assistance. That's a workaround, because otherwise municipalities are not allowed to give money or to make donations to nonprofits. So we can, so that's something that we can work on.
What, I'm trying to understand the chicken and egg scenario. Do we need to put money in the budget before we sort of do a bidding process and sign contracts, or do we have to come to an agreement with organizations on what the services they're provided in dollar amounts before we put them in the budget?
Well, I don't see that we can execute an agreement without having a funding source. So we're going to have to, yeah, we'll have to proceed with, we'll have to proceed with.
So we could proceed sort of with this, this budget season, in theory saying, let's put X dollar amount, you know, $10,000 or $7,000 or $12,000 in a line item that we've renamed from wheat to helping Berlin families in need, and then figure out the best way to do that if that gets approved by the voters at town meeting.
Right. Another opportunity for funding could potentially come from the host community agreement charitable contributions. They are somewhat, on the one HCA we've executed, they're, it's somewhat specific, but it's $25,000. So maybe that's a negotiating point between the town and the, and the retail establishment. We're also working, as you know, we're working on negotiating a cultivation facility, HCA. So maybe down the road, that could also be looked at.
Okay.
My next point is that I, I see emails that make me concerned about the Zoom capacity, Zoom teleconferencing capacity of the town and that we might be being penny wise and pound foolish with our Zooms. And that I get that every Zoom account costs us some money, but the amount of money that time is being spent by town employees to navigate between three accounts when four or five accounts or even six accounts might save a lot of headaches. I think might be a good investment, but I don't know how we decide whether or not it's worthy of another account or how that gets properly executed and used.
I had been using my own personal account for nights when we had a lot of meetings booked. And so just a couple of weeks ago, I did sign up for a third Zoom account for the town. I'm going to primarily use that when, for boards and committees that I'm required to attend. That way I can open and host them. And Mary and Leanne are spending this month, and many thanks to Mary and Leanne for the past several months of opening and hosting Zoom meetings. This month, they are training board and committee members who have some, you know, tech capacity to be able to open and host their own meetings. And I think that they've, Mary, I don't know, can you weigh in? How many have you trained to take on this function for their boards and committees? So far.
Three, four, five, five people. And probably there's six, seven, so seven total, because two probably are just needed the password in the, in the email. They were ready to go. But there's just as many who either don't have the capacity or have not answered, including staff, who haven't answered that they would be willing to do this. Although they're at the same, they're at those meetings, yet they don't.
Right.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to assure that if a board or committee is staffed, that staff get trained. Frankly, I think that that is just logical.
I mean, I get that it's uncomfortable the first couple of times. It is, you know, but has some potential, you know, embarrassment if you struggle with technology a little bit. I have, as someone who supports, you know, what we, we cross the 400-page Zoom accounts at my office this past week. You know, I definitely see people who struggle with it to who, you know, your job is to maintain a level of professionalism. And if you're swearing at your mouse and keyboard, that sometimes violates some of that. And so anything, you know, if there are ways that I can write a little bits of support here or there, some of it is, you know, schedule a five-minute Zoom meeting with me at, at my office. And for someone who wants to like just start it, host it, turn on recording, turn off recording, have someone who's outside the agency join. I'm willing to help with that, because I, I think that Zoom meetings are here for a bit. I think in some cases, as I pointed out, that we have more attendance at our Select Board meetings when there's Zoom meetings than we do when they were hosted at town offices. And at some respects, although we definitely miss a lot of personal interaction by the group of us all being in different places, we are more accessible to someone who wants to be doing a set of dishes, watching their child, doing a few chores while half-listening to what's going on. It's much easier to do when we're on Zoom than it is when we're, we're at the Select Board room. I think that's my list. I think everything else on my list, we managed to get to at different other parts of the meeting.
Well, good. I mean, yes, there's, I think I agree. If, if there's a need to have another Zoom account, I wouldn't hesitate.
I would agree, but the problem that we're having now is an availability of people to run the Zoom. So I can hand it off to whoever. We just need people who can step up and, and take it on, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I think we're all out of questions then, are we?
I think next week has the makings of a longer meeting, because I keep hearing things that are on the meeting for the 23rd. Oh, this is on the 23rd.
Right. I actually have a list here of, the Personnel, the Personnel Committee will be coming and making a recommendation on the FY 2020, FY 22 COLA and, and market wage adjustments. The Housing Consortium. The Benefits Consultant. And it looked like from some emails that we might need to re-vote the CPAC members.
You'll have to ratify that.
And reappoint ZBA members. That's my list I have so far.
Dennis, Dennis will be on as your department appointment next week. So he'll be on first giving an update from his department.
Okay.
And then we have a meeting on the 24th on Richards Road. That's not a meeting, that's just a.
Site visit.
Right.
It's a site visit. Actually, it's, we're going to, I'm going to have to reschedule because the resident can't attend.
Yeah.
I'm interested in attending if I can, so I would schedule it at your convenience and just let me know. And if I can work it into my schedule, I'd like to go.
Okay, okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
At some point, Chris, and obviously it's, it's not an urgent sometime in December, can we possibly put the goals and the objectives that we were all working on back on the calendar, so that we can just see where we are with it and who needs to do what, what needs to move in a shake?
Okay. Maybe we can get an update on ours and Margaret's?
Yep, absolutely.
Mary trying to get our attention.
Well, you have three December meetings outside of coffee talk. And so you got the 14th, the 21st, and the 28th.
Okay.
There's a break, and I'm not sure why, but there's a break between November 30th and December 10th.
The, that's because, that's because. It's because of coffee talk. Coffee talk moves it back another three days.
Okay, okay.
And.
Well.
Because December 5th would have been town meeting, it's, it would have canceled. Without that December 5th town meeting, we could meet on the 5th. Because. That is, that is coffee talk week.
Yeah.
Right.
No.
This is a Saturday.
Right. So, okay, right. So the 7th would have been your meeting and the 10th is coffee talk, so it is the same week.
Okay, yeah, it is the same week, all right.
Well, unless, unless there's an overabundance of agenda items, we'll probably not meet on the 7th then.
Right. Okay.
Well, and if we go either the 14th, 21, or 28, it gives everyone plenty of time to go back through the ones that they had put in and do updates and come prepared and ready to go.
Okay. All right. Well, we do not have an executive session scheduled this evening, so I guess I would take a motion to adjourn.
Submoved.
Done.
Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.